...of why we're running a few minutes late, so we apologize to you. We're glad each and every one of you are here for this meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission. I'll call us to order at this point, and we will start on our agenda as we normally do with an invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand as you are able, and we'll have us an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, for the gift of life we give you thanks; for the beauty of this spring day we offer gratitude and praise. We have received it as a gift, and together we say thank you. For the wonder and beauty of creation we give you thanks and praise; we are blessed by it. For the gift of community, the chance to share life together, we give thanks; we know that we are better together. In so many ways, we are richly blessed. We give thanks and lift up these who offer their gifts and talents to lead our community. We are glad that you have blessed them with wisdom and patience and a spirit of cooperation. Continue to work through them for the benefit of all Macon Bibb. We long for the day when all our neighbors live into their full potential. Bless the work of our government and the actions of the governed, that one day your shalom might reign in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B C. Our invocation tonight was given to us by Dr. Jimmy Aspel. Jimmy has the unfortunate, well, no, I won't say that, I just say he has the responsibility for shepherding two members of the Macon Bibb County Commission. Commissioner Mallory Jones and I are both in his flock, and we cause him consternation from time to time. But Jimmy, we thank you for being here with us. Jimmy's in his fifth year of serving as senior pastor at Vinable United Methodist Church. Prior to coming to Vinable, he served churches in Warren Robbins, sub-south Macon, Glenwood, Georgia, but Jimmy grew up here in Macon. Both of his parents are Macon natives, and he has a rare honor and privilege of serving as the pastor of the church where he grew up. He's a 1984 honor graduate at Stratford Academy, Phi Beta Kappa graduate of Wofford College in Spartanburg, South Carolina, earned a master's degree from Cantor School of Theology of Emory University, and a doctor of ministry from Columbia. In addition to serving a number of denominational leadership capacities, he's very active in our community. He is on the board, directs the Cherry Blossom Festival, and a member of the Rotary Club. He and his wife Vanda have two sons. Their oldest, Jimmy, is a sophomore at the University of Georgia Go Dogs. Their youngest, Joshua, is finishing his junior year at Howard High School. He's an avid golfer and enjoys the outdoor. Jimmy, thank you very much for being here and delivering that invocation to us. And our pledge of allegiance was led by Erin Pettigrew. She's one of our GCAPs students. GCAP stands for Georgia Civic Awareness Program for Students, and this is a year-long program where students from every high school in the county come together and learn more about the government. Erin is a senior at Howard High School, where she is the cheer captain and prides herself in leading the Howard Husky spirit. Erin believes, quote, "Civic education is important because today's youth need to know that they must earn their way in society. In the real world, you work for what you want, and you must separate needs from wants," unquote. After high school, she plans to attend college for a degree in forensic investigation. Erin, thank you very much for being here and for leading us in the pledge of allegiance. It's so refreshing to see some of our young people doing such wonderful work in the community. So, thank you both for getting us started off on the right foot. Our next item on the agenda is the minutes. We had minutes from the meeting of, the pre-commission meeting of April 17th and the regular commission meeting of April 17th, prepared and distributed. Are there any changes or additions? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes by sleshing as prepared and distributed? Second, by Commissioner Shepherd. Further discussion here, none, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Next, we have a presentation of our GCAP students who are finishing up this year, and I think Alicia DuHart is going to, oh, where's Alicia? Hmm? I think Alicia DuHart is going to lead us in this recognition and presentation. Alicia?
Good evening. Caught me off guard.
The GCAPs program is one that the ACCG, that's the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, sponsors and has sponsored for a number of years. Prior to consolidation, Bibb County was a strong advocate for the GCAPs program, and Commissioner Bibbins was instrumental in trying to raise the funds each year to help promote the GCAPs program. This year's group of GCAP students has had an exceptional year, and in addition to learning more about civic involvement in various and sund reforms of government and different organizations and entities and what we do, they attended several functions in Atlanta and the state legislature. Some went to Washington, and some were even selected for a program called Ambassadors in Sneakers, which is an international program, and some of the students actually went to Germany as part of the ambassadors in sneakers program. And this plaque is in recognition of that, about preparing Georgia's future leaders. The Secretary of State Ambassador's Program, 2017-2018, Region Two Champion, presented to the Macon Bibb County GCAPs program student ambassadors. Would all of the members of the GCAPs program, all of the students that are here with us tonight, would y'all please come up and have a photo made with me so that we can present this plaque to you at this point? Commissioner Bibb, would you like to come down? As I say, it is joy and privilege to see young people doing such fine and wonderful things, and we appreciate each and every one of you for participating in the GCAP program this year and for the exciting time that you make. Comments? No, none. Then let me just say, congratulations to you for a job well done. We appreciate you and look forward to what you're gonna do for us in Macon Bibb County. Thank you. Best of luck. I think, Janice, next is the proclamation, and we have several people that are here from Navisant Health to talk to us about stroke awareness. And would those people from Navisant Health who are here for the stroke awareness presentation, would you please come forward at this point in time and join me here at the podium? This is really kind of a bitter, bittersweet thing for me, because this proclamation contains some fairly poignant information that is disturbing and shocking to me. It reads, this proclamation reads as follows. Whereas on behalf of the citizens of Macon Bibb, I am pleased to join the American Stroke Association, a division of the American Heart Association, in celebrating the month of May 2018 and future years as Stroke Awareness Month. And whereas the aim of the National Stroke Awareness Month is to inform Americans that they may be able to save a life of a person experiencing a stroke and be an advocate for early stroke intervention by increasing their awareness about the signs and symptoms of stroke and its devastating effect. Whereas strokes are the fifth-leading cause of death in the United States, affecting approximately 800,000 Americans each year, one every four minutes. And whereas strokes lead to the death and disability of more than 23,000 Georgia citizens each year, costing an estimated $1.5 billion, and stroke costs the United States an estimated $34 billion each year. And whereas the citizens of Macon have the increased risk factors for stroke, including hypertension, diabetes, obesity, tobacco use, hyperlipidemia contributing to the stroke death rate. And whereas the American Heart Association 2020 Impact Goals include improving the cardiovascular health of all Americans by 20%, and whereas recognized primary stroke centers that have achieved designated American Stroke Association Performance Certifications in Georgia are working to increase awareness, promote prevention, treat and minimize the incidence, severity, and damaging effects of strokes in Georgia, although additional research and education is needed. Now therefore, I Robert A. B. Rickett do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Stroke Awareness and Prevention Month in Macon Bibb County, and I urge all citizens to familiarize themselves with the warning signs, symptoms, and risk factors associated with stroke so that we might begin to reduce the devastating effects strokes impose on our state. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the Consolidated Government to be affixed, and I've signed this, and I have also learned that we need to be fast about stroke awareness. Fast, because if you recognize the signs that someone is having a stroke and do something about it properly, you can minimize it, what y'all are able to do with somebody, once they have a stroke, to minimize the effects of it and reduce and reverse the effects of it. So, FAST is an acronym that stands for face. If you notice somebody, all of a sudden, one side of the face seems to droop, or the smile is crooked, and you say, can you raise your arms, F.A., can you raise your arms? And if they raise one arm and can't raise the other, or neither one, if their speech, uh, 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 can't, FAST, F.A.S., then if you get the F, an A, or an S, then the T stands as time to call 911 right then. 911, get somebody, get them some help, get them to the medical center of Navisant Health where they can, or the Coliseum where they can get help. These folks are all from Navisant? Are you all from Navisant or some other, well, then I was right when I said Navisant, told you who. Navisant, but get them to a hospital, get them to 911, because the devastating effects of a stroke can be minimized or even reversed with early treatment. Now, I know somebody is here that's gonna wanna say a word or two and help me out of this.
Come on Denise, I'll say something.
Well, at least let me present the proclamation and say, thank you. But what y'all do for us? Come on.
Mayor, I want you to meet, this is Denise Cohen, this is Dr. Matt Smith.
Oh, good, Dr. Smith, how are you?
They're the champions behind all of this at now.
Good, good, say a word, say a word or two for us, please.
I'm impressed you remembered fast. Yay.
We taught one good.
We taught him well. Just to reiterate, the most important thing is fast. The most important thing is recognizing those signs and symptoms of stroke. The quicker you get to the hospital, the quicker you get treatment. We can reduce disability by up to 30%. So, the most important thing is early recognition and early detection.
And when she said 30%, that's with the medication. We have also people who could do surgical procedures to remove the stroke, and that's a new cutting-edge thing that we're doing now. Patients, they could actually have their stroke removed by a specialized surgeon who can actually go in through the groin and take a stroke out. And these people have completely different resolution than other people, and we have that available at Navisant now. We hope to grow that procedure and other procedures. We're also doing research at our facility, so we're growing. We're trying to offer as much as we can to the community here.
Well, thank you very much for being here, and this is Stroke Awareness Month, May. So, remember FAST and act on it. If you see face, arms, and speech, then it's time to call 911. Thank you all for what you do for us well. Blessed and fortunate to have Navisant here in our community and this level of medical technology that's available to us. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate y'all more than you know.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
And the final invited guest tonight, we have somebody that has been an advocate for improved health and what you can do for your own wellness, and that's none other than our own Sharice Stevens. Sharice, where are you? You were, hey, come to the podium, please, ma'am. And Sharice was recently recognized as the National Fitness Museum and Institutional National spokesperson and a 2018 America Walks Fellow. Congratulations. Do you tell us a little bit more about your recognition, please, Sharice?
So excited, thank you, sir. I'm actually the only black woman in the United States that actually got this award. I'm gonna be speaking throughout the nation on fitness and wellness, and if you don't know, I started the Georgia Wellness and Fitness Festival. We're in our fifth year. We went from 1,500 people to 20,000 people trying to live a healthier life. So, I wanna thank the mayor and all the county commissioners for your support. Mark your calendar for September 3rd through the 9th. We want you to be a partner, and let's get healthy. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sharice, and congratulations to you. Next item on our agenda, or public comments on agenda items, this is when people that have, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lucas?
May I ask that we vote on item L out of sequence? That's the resolution honoring Dr. King, and this is on the occasion of the 50th anniversary of his assassination, and go ahead and maybe present that, have it read in its entirety, and present it to representatives of the NAACP. May I ask?
You can certainly make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and second to take item L out of order and do it next on the agenda? Any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of the motion to move item L up to be the next item on our agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, so the item L is up then, and I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution in its entirety.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on the 50th anniversary of his assassination. Whereas Dr. King was a Baptist minister and founder of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, who had led the civil rights movement since mid-1950s, using a combination of impassioned speeches and nonviolent protests to fight segregation and achieve significant civil rights advancements for African-Americans. And whereas Dr. King sought to widen his appeal beyond his own race, speaking out publicly against the Vietnam War, and working to form a coalition of poor Americans, black and white alike, to address such issues as poverty and unemployment. And whereas during the spring of 1968, while preparing for a planned march to Washington to lobby Congress on behalf of the poor, Dr. King was called to Memphis, Tennessee to support a sanitation worker's strike. And whereas, on the night of April 3rd, Dr. King gave a speech at the Mason Temple Church in Memphis, and in said speech, Dr. King seemed to foreshadow his own untimely passing, or at least to strike a particular reflective note, ending with these now historic words. "And I have seen the promised land. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land. And so, I'm happy tonight. I'm not worried about anything, and I am not fearing any man. Mine eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord." And whereas, on April 4th, shortly after 6:00 p.m., Dr. King was standing on the second floor balcony of the Rurane Motel, where he and his associates were staying, when a sniper's bullet struck him in the neck. He was rushed to a hospital, where he was pronounced dead about an hour later at the age of 39. And whereas shocked and distressed over the news of Dr. King's death, and amid a wave of national mourning, President Lyndon B. Johnson urged the United States Congress to speedily pass the civil rights legislation, then entering the House of Representatives for debate, calling it a fitting legacy to Dr. King and his life of work. And on April 11th, President Johnson signed the Fair Housing Act, a major piece of civil rights legislation. And whereas his sacrifice continues to reverberate throughout the nation in large and small ways, our nation is still trying to recover from Dr. King's death and the opportunities for racial equality, economic justice, and peace, which Dr. King referred to as a beloved community that seems to recede in his aftermath. Whereas his sacrifice led to an outpouring of anger among black Americans, as well as a period of national mourning that helped speed the way for an equal housing bill that would be the last significant legislative achievement of the civil rights era. And whereas Dr. King was assassinated 50 years ago in Memphis, Tennessee, on April 4th, 1968, and whereas Dr. King has remained the most widely-known African-American leader of his era, and the most public face of the civil rights movement, along with his most eloquent voice, now therefore be it resolved by the Macon Bibb County Commission, and is hereby so resolved by the authority of the same, that Macon Bibb County Commission recognizes the 50th anniversary of the death of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and urges the citizens of Macon Bibb County be mindful of Dr. King's contribution for the betterment of all Americans and of all its citizens throughout the year. Be it further resolved, the Macon Bibb County Commission hereby declares that the foregoing preamble and whereas provisions set forth herein do constitute and shall be considered to be substantial provision of this resolution and are hereby incorporated by the reference of this provision. Be it further resolved, this resolution should be effective immediately upon its approval by the mayor and upon its adoption into law without such approval.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the, which committee had this? Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We presented this at a community program prior to its approval, but we have been told that it would be unanimously approved, and we appreciate that. But we previously presented this to a program that was sponsored in the community by the NAACP, and Ms. Ryan is here representing the NAACP tonight, and we read and presented this, and they were very grateful that we were recognizing this event. Sad, but a momentous occasion that we all need to remember so that we don't ever forget those things that we've worked over the years so hard to get rid of. The struggle continues, however. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you to the legal department for putting together that very fine document.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Now back to the standing order, the next item on the agenda is for public comments on agenda items. This is the opportunity for you to address us on an item that's on the agenda for action tonight, and we've got a couple of people that are here to talk to us about agenda items. Those that are here that wanna talk to us about a non-agenda item will be recognized later in the program. But for comments on agenda items, first, Mr. Wade Horton and Jackie Glover, who are here to talk about transit. Mr. Horton?
Okay. Non-agenda, non-agenda item, Dr. Holiday, is yours an agenda item about Mullen Out to Belly or non-agenda?
It is an agenda item.
About an agenda item. We'll come forward, please, so you're recognized for five minutes.
Under old business number C, it's a resolution authorizing y'all to modify the 17th extension of a contract with Mullen Out to Belly. Seventeen, five, 10, 15, 17 times, y'all have extended these people's contract. The road improvement program, 1994, I think it was, long time ago, y'all are still extending this contract with these people, and it's been a series of sad events. From the Eisenhower Parkway Extension, which failed, to the controversial Forest Hill Road, which y'all have fixed the part that didn't need fixing, and that the congestion is still at Vile because you ran out of money, because their design, their design was so faulty. Georgia DOT said, we're not gonna help you with this design. This is Mullen Out to Belly. Remember Houston Road, that fiasco? That was Mullen Out to Belly. Ingleside Avenue was gonna be four lanes? That was Mullen Out to Belly. There's such a long list of problems with this contractor's vision, dysfunctional vision, their dystopic vision for Macon. They designed a bunch of arterials to go out and sprawl Macon, and that's costing y'all a lot of money. You don't have the money. You don't have the money to sprawl. You got enough money, maybe to fix your city, and you're not, and you're running out of it. Because of their vision, Mullen Out to Belly, and you keep extending their vision. What they say about insanity is doing the same thing over and over again. There are good, there are contractors out there that have visions for strong cities. In fact, there's, if you Google "strong towns," there are groups of designers that actually design cities to build them compact and strong. They understand that sprawl is unsustainable. And y'all are seeing that now as the inner city of Macon rots, as we lose our Kroger, that was my Kroger. Everybody's moving out to the outside because that's the way Mullen Out to Belly designed your city, and y'all keep following their ideas. Seventeen times, y'all have extended a contract of the most controversial actor, the most controversial contractor in our city's history, and y'all keep extending their contract. It's beyond me. Every time I hear about it, I guess this is maybe the 10th time I've spoken against extending their contract. The pedestrian safety review board is number K. Mullen Out to Belly's visions are not for pedestrians, they are for fast traffic. Ask Mr. Kulash, who was hired and fired under the road improvement program. He knew about safety of pedestrians, and Mullen Out to Belly did a show in quite a, that was another sad, sad chapter in Macon, that we fired the guy who could have given us pedestrian safety 20 years ago, and the Mullen Out to Belly cabal. And that includes those of you who've accepted their money, who've accepted their ideas, their poisonous ideas. Y'all are part of that cabal that's extending their contract for the 17th time. Y'all are part of that cabal that's extending their contract for the seventeenth time. You know, Jeffersonville Road, that's their project, their failed project. And believe me, their vision for five lanes of Jeffersonville Road, like their vision of five lanes of Forest Hill Road, is a bizarre, bizarre vision. It has, it is poison for pedestrians. It is poison for a vision for a strong town. It is sprawl, it is unnecessary concrete, and it is just leading you into a hole. I could go on and on, it's almost thirty years of, what is, twenty-five years of disaster. And good luck following that road.
Thank you, Dr. Holiday. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Curry, Mr. Robert Curry is here to talk to us about Item H, which is fees at the landfill. Mr. Curry, you're recognized, five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, and everyone. Good evening. I was reading this Item H, and I know we don't suppose to have a back and forth thing, but I need some clarity on this. Is this increased fee for the general public, or is this for contractors, or is this for commercial people using the landfill?
It would be for commercial, not residential, because it wouldn't be for residential. If you, if you take items down to in excess of the five hundred pounds, I believe is what you're authorized per month, right, then there could be an increased fee.
Okay, my reason on that is it's trash everywhere in Macon. And if you put a fee on the people where they bring the trash back out and throw it back in the city, I think that's kind of crucial. I don't know what the increase is going to be because I don't see that nowhere. I very seldom, I don't never come up here talking about what I don't know I'm talking about, but I'm up here at this time searching for some knowledge on how this is going to work. How much is the increase going to be? Do you have that knowledge at this time?
Not immediately. Somebody that was here last week may recall, whether it was two dollars a ton or two dollars and fifty cents a...
It was like twenty-seven dollars a ton or thirty-one, two, three, four.
Five dollars a ton, we're talking five dollars a ton increase.
All right. That's basically what I had. I was wondering whether that was going to be for the general public, but you said that's going to be for contractors and commercial people.
Yes, sir.
Because I know we got enough increase, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Curry. We appreciate you being here. Okay. We have a couple of other non-agenda items that we'll get to a little bit later in the program, but that brings us now to reports from our standing committees. And the first will be Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Watkins. Vice Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The committee met on Tuesday, April twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen, and took the following action. We approved the following SPOLOX project expenditures. The first was appropriating five point four million dollars for debt retirement in calendar year twenty eighteen. The second item was a contract with Carter Engineering Group for a planning and design improvement to Middle Georgia State University's road sidewalks in the amount of two hundred and six thousand dollars. The seventeenth extension agreement with Mullen Alta-Belly related to program management to incorporate additional pedestrian crossings into the design of Jeffersonville Road Expansion Project in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars. A contract with Sam Schwartz Engineering for the planning and design of a roundabout at Forsyth Street, Spring Street, and Pine Street in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. The committee approved the following agreements and contracts. An agreement with Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand for lighting to be installed at Henderson Stadium, and an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the installation of the lighting. The committee approved the increase in the tonnage fees charged to disposal or refuge at the Walker Road landfill. The committee also accepted the grant from State Farm in the amount of ten thousand to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the twenty-eighteen Teen Driver Safety Summer Program. This concludes the actions taken by Operations and Finance Committee. The committee will convene on Thursday, May the third, at nine a.m. for additional budget hearings with outside agencies. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Watkins. Next, Economic and Community Development Committee, that report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, fellow commissioners, and citizens who are here with us. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on April twenty-fourth, twenty-eighteen and took the following action. We have to say upfront that it was a rather lengthy meeting. I think we, our meeting lasted about four hours because we had had prior meetings that had to be kind of changed because of the length of other committee meetings. So we want to thank all those who attended. We did have really good attendance, and our meetings were held out here in the council chambers. The committee heard a presentation from Mr. Greg Hayes regarding the Sandy Beach Water The committee also heard a presentation regarding the Weirdo Weekend Event at Arrowhead Park and the Father's Day Event at Sandy Beach. The Middle Georgia Regional Commission presented an update on the urban redevelopment plan. The committee heard an overview of the work of Main Street Macon during the past year. The committee appointed or approved the recommended appointment of Ron Wildmon to the Macon-Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board. The committee approved a resolution honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on the fiftieth anniversary of his assassination. The committee approved the master plan for Dolores Brooks Community Center, formerly East Macon Community Center. The committee approved the resolution that the county attorney work with local development authorities to develop a commercial economic development incentive policy. And that resolution was authored by Commissioner Schlesinger. The committee heard updates from the Small Business Development Office, which was an excellent, excellent report. The Urban Development Authority, Keep Macon Beautiful, South Bibb Recreation Center, and people can be, will be happy to know, and I know Commissioner Shepherd and I are happy because my district starts across the street from where, from his district where the South Bibb Recreation Center is located. Beautiful facility, but we got an update there that it will be opening in the next few weeks, what we understand. And we also heard the, from our own arena football team, the Georgia Doom, which is playing now, we encourage everybody to please support it because we don't want to lose a sports entity like that because citizens are not supporting. And this concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Lucas. Next, I understand there's no report from public safety, no report from facilities and engineering, which brings us then to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are applications for alcohol beverage licensing. There are four items on the agenda for the consent agenda, and they are all accompanied by the requisite sheriff's investigation report to say that a criminal background check on the applicant came back satisfactorily, the business license certification that all of the appropriate fees have been paid, a planning and zoning compliance certificate, the measurement form from the county engineer to say that the location meets all of the distance requirements from schools, churches, and other facilities for distance requirement purposes, and the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. So each of these four applications were all accompanied by that documentation. The first application, the agent's name is Bularmo Baragon Garcia. The business name is Zango Cosina. It's at three thirty-six Second Street and going in where the old Laniers used to be. It is for liquor mixed drinks, beer and wine, all to be consumed on the premises at that location. The second application agent is Mary Strong. It is for the Walgreen Company doing businesses Rite Aid at eight ninety-two Pierce Avenue, and it is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The third is Chonghui Yi. The business name is J. and Y. Enterprises, doing businesses The Village Market at twenty-seven forty-six Riverside Drive. It is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And finally, Regina Lynette Smith. The business name is R. F. L. G. Incorporated, doing businesses The Gold Room at forty-seven forty Pineona Avenue, and it is for liquor mixed drinks, beer, and wine to be consumed on the premises at that location. The committee of the whole reviewed these and recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of issuing those four licenses as requested, signify, oops, sorry, got a discussion. Commissioner Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've seen and heard about issues at the former status event over on Pineona Avenue. I'm just hoping that this time a woman who is taking the helm and applying for these licenses are going to be in charge, and that I'm hoping that she will show the men in the past who have caused so much havoc how it's supposed to really be done. So I look forward to approving this tonight for her.
Good, very good. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those four licenses, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, those four licenses will be issued as requested. That brings us next then to Number Nine, which is Old Business. The first item is to appropriate some SPOLOX money to pay off debt, and I'll ask the clerk to read that, ordinance by caption, please.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the appropriation of up to five million four hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the two thousand and eighteen SPOLOX revenues to provide funding for calendar year two thousand and eighteen debt retirement and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to hire an engineer for work at the Middle Georgia State University Roads and Entranceway Program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract between Macon-Bibb County and Carter Engineering Group, LLC, in the amount of two hundred and six thousand dollars for the planning and design of improvements to Middle Georgia State University roads and sidewalks, to be paid from two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. One no, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is Item C, which is a Seventeenth Amendment to modify the contract with Mullen Alta-Belly, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to modify the seventeenth extension agreement between Macon-Bibb County and Mullen Alta-Belly Associates relating to project number five-two-four-zero-dash-zero-zero, program management, by increasing the contract price by an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars from two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds to incorporate additional pedestrian crossings into the design of the Jeffersonville Road Expansion Project and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. Back in September of twenty sixteen, I think many of us around this horseshoe said that we were probably tired of approving Mullen Alta-Belly over and over again. And Dr. Holiday and I talked, and I expressed that to him. But, Dr. Holiday, I do understand your sentiments, but, sir, in good faith, because of this project with Jeffersonville Road, I assure you, this will be the final time.
Thank you, Commissioner Tillman. Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
Yes, I just wanted to say that the, other projects have not included the specific wording pedestrian crossing, additional pedestrian crossings, or anything approaching that. And so I think it speaks volumes for the commitment of this commission, not only to the goals set up by the Pedestrian Safety Review Board, which is monitoring these road projects, but also this commission. And you can rest assured that not only are we looking at the actual design, but we're also looking at pedestrian safety, we're also looking at shrubbery, how that looks because that's going to go through communities. And so it can't just be an open speedway out there. We're also looking at from pedestrian safety of making some recommendations about speed reduction out there. I don't know whether we'll be able to do that or not, but that's one of the things that we're looking at. So there are a number of things, and we plan to have a community meeting to discuss all of this during the month of May, once we've approved the money to move forward on this project. There will be a neighborhood meeting where we have those who have the bid, who are going to be doing the work, will come and share everything, and there will be a time for additional input. So I'm going to support this. I am pleased that we're headed in this direction. I think it's the right direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is Item D, which is another services, professional services contract for a roundabout, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract between Macon-Bibb County and Sam Schwartz Engineering, D. P. C. PC, in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars for the planning and design of a roundabout and other improvements to the intersection of Forsyth Street, Spring Street, and Pine Street, to be paid from two thousand and seventeen SPOLOX bond proceeds and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mr. Jones, got you on this one, sir.
Yes, sir, I have no problem with the roundabout there. My concern before was we're paying eighty percent of that, and Navisant's paying twenty. That was not a, that was a poorly negotiated deal, in my opinion, and it probably ought to be the reverse, where we're paying twenty and Navisant's paying eighty. So for that reason, not against the roundabout, but I am against the taxpayers of Macon-Bibb County paying eighty percent of that. And that's what SPOLOX dollars are. They're collected from the citizens of Macon-Bibb County. So for that reason, I'll vote against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Schlesinger, got you next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote for this and encourage the rest of the commissioners around this horseshoe to vote for this. This is kind of a crazy intersection to begin with. This is public property that this roundabout is going to be built on, so I think Navisant offering to do twenty percent of the cost is really a gift to this community. It's going to be a great gateway into downtown Macon, and I think that ultimately it's going to be a blessing to the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Commissioner Allen, got you next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, who came up with this idea about a roundabout there?
It was part of the...
How'd it come up?
It was part of the Macon Action Plan that came about with all of their community charrettes and discussions, so... So once the concept of a roundabout at that location, and that's not the only recommendation, but that was included in the original Make an Action Plan. Subsequent to that, Navisant hired the same traffic engineer to come up with a traffic plan all around. Navisant helped to help improve traffic flow in and out and around, and this roundabout was again mentioned in that, in that concept as well. So I don't know if I've answered your question, but that's where it came from, Make an Action Plan.
Part of that, did they, did they look at the discussion of any wrecks there, any fatalities there, any people that was hit by automobiles there, how the speed, how traffic got through the intersection? Because I, you know, I drove fire trucks down there through that road, and I never had problems going through, ambulances we went through. And I mean, I just don't see, I did not see the need of us, as Commissioner Jones said, spending eighty percent, and basically it looks like it's being put there for Navisant, not they're putting there for us, because traffic does flow through there at a good, at a good rate, and I just wondered what happened.
I'm not able to answer questions about what they looked at, but like I say, the only thing I can say is it was recommended in the original Make an Action Plan after community charrettes. Is there further, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got two noes, got, I'm sorry, three. Got Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Vivins, and Commissioner Allen. One, two, three, four, five, five, five to three, the ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item E, which is a memorandum of understanding with the Department of Family and Children's Services, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between Macon Bibb County and the Division of Family and Children's Services, providing for the joint collaboration of providing job and skills training to youth through the Georgia Teen Work Internship Program and for other lawful purposes.
The operations and finance committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Now that brings us now to item F, which is the purchase of some lighting for Henderson Stadium, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for lighting to be installed at Henderson Stadium, to be paid from the two thousand and eighteen capital improvement fund and for other lawful purposes.
The operations and finance committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution, ma'am?
I just love it.
Oh, oh, I, I, okay. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item G, which is a contract to install the lighting, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Middle Georgia Outdoor Lighting Inc. in the amount of ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for services related to the installation of the Musco lighting equipment at Henderson Stadium, two thousand and eighteen capital improvement funds, and for other lawful purposes.
The operations and finance committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to increase the fees at the landfill, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission revising section twenty-two dash one oh-two of the Code of Ordinances of Macon Bibb County to provide for an increase to the tonnage fees charged for disposal of refuse at the Walker Road landfill, to provide an adoption and effective date and for other lawful purposes.
The operations and finance committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Vice Chairman Watkins, got you.
I thought there was a question earlier, so I thought I'd just go into a little detail about it. So this request would take the current fee from twenty-seven dollars a ton to thirty-two dollars a ton, effectively a five dollar increase on the service. If you are a Bibb County resident now, and you have a reason to go to the landfill outside of the trash that you put on the side of the street, if you have Bibb County ID, your first five hundred tons every month-
Pound, pound, five hundred pounds.
Five hundred, five hundred pounds or half a ton is free. It's free to you as a Bibb County resident. If you exceed that amount, then the per ton fee is prorated. Now it's twenty-seven, it'd be thirty-two after July first if this passes. So that's the major change. It's anticipated that if we collect the same amount of trash that we collected last year, that this would be an impact of a hundred and fifty thousand on the general budget.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Watkins. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item I, which is a grant to the sheriff's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from State Farm in the amount of ten thousand dollars to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office for the two thousand and eighteen teen driver safety summer program and for other purposes.
The operations and finance committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next, item J is a resolution to install some plaques in a couple of locations, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the installation of plaques at the Little Richard House and the Grand Opera House to commemorate the music history of Macon, Georgia, with funding for said plaques and installation to be provided by the Charles Cox Family Trust and for other purposes.
The operations and finance committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee amendment to the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution as amended by the committee is adopted. Next is item K, which is an appointment to the Macon Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission appointing Ron Wildman to the Macon Bibb County Pedestrian Safety Review Board and for other purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item L was previously handled. That was the resolution honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. So that brings us to item M, which is a resolution to approve the master plan at Dolores Brooks Community Center, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the master plan for the Dolores A. Brooks Community Center in substantially the same form as the hereto-attached Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Mr. Lucas?
Yes, I just want to add that one of the features of this master plan is a lot of activities and equipment designed for the disabled. And so just like Henry Burns Park is incorporating a lot of that over there, then the Dolores A. Brooks Community Center will become known as a place where there's maximized accessibility for the disabled. So we're very proud of that and look forward to those improvements being made, and then we can go on to Phase Three.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to help develop a commercial economic development incentives policy, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to request that the county attorney work with local development authorities to develop a commercial economic development incentive policy to help attract and retain commercial businesses in Macon Bibb County and for other lawful purposes.
Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Schlesinger, got you first, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a resolution that really resulted from Kroger's leaving its Pineona location. We, as a community, we tend to, you know, celebrate the great successes that we have, the Amazon Distribution Center, Irving Paper Products, Tractor Supply Distribution Center. But at the same time, we see some big box businesses here in Macon Bibb County closing up shop as well. So in speaking with the county attorney about what we can do, this was really the best that we could really come up with and do at this point, and that's to work with our local development authorities to develop some kind of economic development incentive policies that would encourage businesses, big box businesses, to stay, stay put here in Macon. And what that plan will ultimately look like remains to be seen, but we'll be developing that over the course of the next few months.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlesinger. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to item O, which is the, an amendment to the timeline for splosh expenditures, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the Thirteenth Amendment to the two thousand and eighteen splosh project timeline and budget as presented by the splosh project manager and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the committee amendment to the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the committee amendment to the resolution is adopted. Next is item P, which is an appropriation of some additional funds to the Macon Transit Authority for the charging station for the two new electric buses, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of up to a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen splosh bond proceeds to cover the additional matching funds needed by the Macon Transit Authority for the grant that MTA has received for two electric buses and charging stations and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, I've got you.
Thank you. I'm going to be voting against this. We tabled this in appropriations committee last week, and I wanted to get some additional information. First of all, I was a little upset that we were dragging our feet on some things, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that there were some things that we as a commission could do to hold up some other things that need, didn't need to get priority over certain other things, like Jeffersonville Road and a few other things. So we tabled this in the committee. It came back today in the committee of the whole, which is where things come when people want to have an easier time getting them passed, and that's what happened with this today. We learned some interesting things today, though. We learned that the transit authority has seven hundred thousand dollars in reserve. Now, wouldn't it be logical that you would take a hundred and forty thousand dollars out of that seven hundred thousand dollar reserves or bank account or what's left over after everything else is paid? That's what the seven hundred thousand dollars represents. So I asked that question. Apparently, in asking some other questions, I can sympathize with Wade Horton when he goes to those meetings down there, because the tone that was used by the director down there, Craig Ross, when I asked certain questions, was totally disrespectful, totally disrespectful. And those who were in the room, basically what he said to me was, I shouldn't ask that I'm expected to approve, ultimately approve, their budget, but he's going to tell me what I can ask and what I can't ask. It was a very germane question to the topic that we were discussing. But for someone who's directing an entity that we're supposed to approve the budget for, for that person, to stand in an open meeting of other elected officials and other community folks and to say basically, I'm not talking about that, that's not the question you need to be asking, and then says, and let's move on. I sympathize with you, Mr. Horton, and I understand exactly what it does if I'm the only one who votes against this. I'm giving you the reasons why. We're down here now, struggling, trying to figure out how we're going to make ends meet. And we're taking a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that we're talking about electric bus charging stations. And we've got an entity that has seven hundred thousand dollars in reserves, and we're going to give them that hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then last year, they asked us for an additional three hundred plus thousand dollars, and the year before, an additional two hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars. Now somebody's doing something wrong. I understand that there is a committee that's been set up that's going to be working on that. I don't think it has met. Has it met? Has that committee met? Twice? Well, obviously, they didn't discuss this, because it's, they're still making requests of us after we fund their initial budget. Something is wrong when you keep coming back like this. And we have to cover for an entity that we're really not sure where everything's going. So would you ask yourself this question? If somebody has seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank, and they come to you and ask you for a hundred and forty thousand dollars? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. Got two noes, Commissioner Lukens and Commissioner Vivins. The ayes have it. Show of hands is requested. Those voting aye. Let Mr. Lynn see the hands of the ayes, please. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those voting no. One, two, six to two. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted. Item Q is next, and that is appropriate some additional funds for Jeffersonville Road, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of up to one million three hundred thousand dollars from the two thousand and seventeen splosh bond proceeds and two thousand and eighteen splosh revenues to make additional funding available for the Jeffersonville Road project and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, I've got your light on again.
Thank you. Yeah, again, because this is important. Both Commissioner Schlesinger and I have a portion of Jeffersonville Road in our districts. And the people out there really are fed up. They are just so tired. This is twenty-four years now that this road was originally scheduled to be done. This commission has pledged its support to this project. So we have been wondering what the problem, what was the problem. But I want to thank the, well, G.DOT got, G.DOT was intimately involved in this. Senator Lucas, Representative Beverly, and I think they've been collaborating with the folks at the state and with the mayor and his staff. And from what Senator Lucas told me this morning, our, the amount that we're expected to come up- me this morning, our, the amount that we're expected to come up with is $166,000 now as opposed to the 1.9 million that we were looking at. So, you know, I kinda think Senator Lucas is a pretty good negotiator. I think he did a good job on that. So, but anyway, I think approving the additional money is wise on our part, 'cause there's more than just the, the road. There's the aesthetics, all of the other things that need to be done out there. So, I ask for unanimous support for this, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your involvement and your staff's involvement in this.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a late addition that was added in pre-commission, and that is an amendment to the urban redevelopment plan that was requested by the Macon Housing Authority in connection with a grant application that's being submitted for the redevelopment of Tyndall Heights, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and adopt amendments to the Macon Bibb County Urban Redevelopment Plan related to the Tyndall Fields Development and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That brings us now to new business, and there are only a couple of items of new business that have been prepared and sent down. The first is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Violence Against Women Act allocation in the amount of $50,000, requiring a match of $16,000 to the Bibb County Solicitors, from the Bibb County Solicitors Office. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee for further study and evaluation. Item B is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional consulting services agreement with MyD Golf LLC in an amount not to seek $90,000, an additional $45,000 for design services for the Bowden Golf Course to be paid out of 2018 SPOLOST funds. I'm gonna refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. However, we certainly anticipate additional items coming down from the legal department during the rest of the week, so I would urge you, if you're interested, to check the agenda, which is published on Friday afternoon, and that will contain all items for our committee meetings, which will begin next Tuesday, May the 8th, at nine o'clock in the committee meeting room immediately behind us. That's nine o'clock next Tuesday. Check the agenda coming out on Friday for items that'll be on the committee agenda. That brings us now to public comments on non-agenda items. And we've got several people that wanted to talk to, several people that wanted to talk to us tonight about a variety of topics. The first is James Honeycutt. Mr. Honeycutt wanted to talk to us about several different items. Mr. Honeycutt, are you still here with us? Mr. James Honeycutt? Mr. Honeycutt? No?
I'm not taking his place.
What if, do you know what he was here to talk about?
He wanted to be on.
Oh, well, no, sir, you can't take his place. Well, you, all right, you may have signed up.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what, what to address this on.
All right, well, let, let me go on then and, and get to those people that did sign up. Mr. Curry, now, you talked to us a little bit earlier, but you also had a non-agenda item that you wanted to talk to us about. We appreciate your patience. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor.
Or should I take away some of your, no, five minutes, I'm sorry, I'm just having fun at your expense.
Mr. Mayor, here I go.
Yes, sir.
Here I go again.
Yes, sir.
I've been down here many days, many ways, out here, behind the wall. Now, it's so much tribulation that go on in this place, it's just mind-boggling. Now, you say you're broke. I don't know whether or not you're broke, but you say you're broke, and my thing is, I've been, I've been over in Bermuda, so when I got back, a guy told me, he said, "Man, you read the article on the bridge at Mercer?" I said, "No, I ain't read no article on no bridge at Mercer." So, I read the article, Mr. Mayor. Now, I was behind that wall that when you come up with an idea to give Mercer $2.8 million for that bridge, I call it the Elton Pedestrian Bridge. 2.8 million for that bridge, and everybody fell in line with you. Now, we broke. Mercer said they were gonna spend $400 million of their own money, and you give them $2.8 million of our money, hard taxpayer money, then go up on the garbage fee for the seniors. I can't understand it. Okay, now, we got another bridge in my district with Commissioner Tillman.
Excuse me? Let's, let's don't have back and forth with commissioners.
Oh, back, I was talking to you.
That's right, please, direct, direct your attention and refrain from...
Well, he talked back. Don't take him a time, Mr. Mayor. But anyway, getting back to the bridge in my area, the bridge in my area, now, I'm gonna double back to Mercer for a minute. The bridge at Mercer got lighting, $58,000 worth of lighting, fifty. You could land a helicopter you used to fly, and I could land an L-15 I used to work on on that bridge. Down on Law Cabin, the bridge have no lights, in the dark, no paint on the bridge. So, that's, that's a, that's a despair to treatment, Mr. Mayor. Okay, now, I'm gonna jump to another item. Dr. Holliday mentioned this. GDOT was supposed to do a project from Forest Hill Road to Pine On Avenue in the 90s, $40 million. Supposed to came Forest Hill Road, cross paths down Hollingworth to Law Cabin, all the way around to Pine On, a full lane. Okay. It didn't happen, 'cause the people over in this area didn't want it. So, they jumped up by robbing Federal Credit Union and took it all the way around to Pine On. In the poor and old press neighborhood, they just forgot about it. Commissioner Tillman got a Band-Aid put on our road, whereas out there at Forest Hill, they got 150 new streetlights, markers on the street, paving, curbs, gutters, the whole nine yards. We got a little shitey contractor to come over there, and now, we got more water running in the road now than we had before they took it out of the gutters. No sidewalks, no, we got some sidewalks, no gutters. Okay, so this is just blatant discrimination, Mr. Mayor, and you the head man down here. This just, this just don't go on without your approval. So, it's like a tale of two cities. The dog pine is bigger than the senior citizens center. It's sad, but you finna go, your time up, but these other people, they yet to see. We gonna have to do some accountability down here. Nobody holding y'all accountable. So, when we come down, well, when I come down here, I can't say we, I'm speaking, me, myself, and I, when I come down here, try to stay abreast on what's going on, it seems like y'all not conscious with the money. You do what you wanna do with it, where you wanna do with it, where you wanna put it, and it's not fair. One lady said, "Well, we pay the highest taxes." If you pay the highest taxes, you make the most money. You can't pay no more than you got. So, what are y'all gonna tighten up down here with this ship? Now, I stood on that bridge with you, Mr. Tillman, last year, a whole year, talking about the road they rode. I said, "Mr. Tillman, you need to check these contractors before they get away from him, 'cause once they go, it's history." About the water running in the road, the bridge, the water, landscape he rode, no lights on the bridge, no paint on the bridge, that's been a year later. No accountability. You take us for granted. We give you, here, you take a yard, we give you a yard, you want a mile. But it's gonna collapse sooner or later, Mr. Mayor. I time up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. We appreciate you being here, and we appreciate your comments. Next, Mr. Horton, Mr. Wade Horton, who wants to talk to us about transit.
Last time I was here, I was trying to validate why I feel like I should be able to speak about transit authority issues, because I pay to ride. I pay $100 a month, which comes $1,200 a year. Over 10 years, that's $12,000. I've been riding along with 10, but it's been $12,000, and also, my mom, she's elderly, and she rides, so I don't give her a monthly pass, but I do give her, buy her a 20 ride pass, and that's $40, so I feel like I should be able to speak about these issues. Prior to, well, during the last reign of Chairman Ross's stance as chairman, he made a couple of changes to the meetings, and one was that we would have meetings every other month, and I expressed to you guys the concern on how people who normally attend all of their meetings would be notified about a special call meetings, and that was a, that was a concern that I finally got answered to. On this past April the 20th, there was a special call meeting, and, well, what's it, 24th, this past Tuesday, there was a special call meeting, and I found out about it from I got the notice of a 5:30 meeting on that Tuesday at 5:08 on my Facebook page, and went back and looked, and it actually was sent out at 4:35, 4:50, special call meeting. My question is, I wanna know, were the board members notified at 4:35, or did they get prior notice? When did they know that they were gonna have a special call meeting? And I don't know if they had a special call meeting to discuss the electric buses and charge stations that they want to purchase. I wasn't prepared to speak on that, so I did not speak on it. But this is some of, these are some of the things that are wrong at the transit authority. We're not being given transparency, we're not being notified this was a concern, and sure many of you knew that I, well, know that I initially said this when it first happened. I, I don't know what, what, what can be done about it, and I wanna also reiterate to you guys that when we came down here talking about issues at the transit authority, we had been to the transit authority years before we came here talking to them, they paid us no attention. They were rude, president was rude at the time, the chairman, I'm sorry, chairman at time was very rude. Matter of fact, got in a couple of shouting matches at me during my time to speak. So, there are some issues going on. I, I've been trying to lay out a little bit of stuff at a time, and I'm gonna get into, eventually, how we, how this executive board that no one seems to know exists appointed our, our current chairman, who also now carries the title of president. So, and I, I would tell you that he's probably the most powerful CEO the transit authority has ever had because of that. Now, I would like to know who was responsible for notifying the public of a special call meeting. I know we have acting president, Mr. Chuck Howard, and I plan to talk to him, maybe to see how they're giving out, and if there's a, going to be a procedure in place to notify us of, of meetings. But I'm gonna leave you with this, like I said, I will be laying out the way the appointment was given, because in the past, when there has been a chairman, oh, well, I'm sorry, not chairman, but when we've been looking for a CEO at the transit authority, the top five prospects, along with their resumes, were given in the paper, and I don't think that happened this time. If, if it has, please stand me corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. We appreciate your patience, appreciate you being here, and thank you for your comments. Next, Mr. Chet Novak. Mr. Novak wants to talk to us about several things as well. Mr. Novak, thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. Commissioner Lucas, I have an apology. I had volunteered to help at one of your functions after the last meeting, and there was a special congressional thing that went on, and I couldn't make it, I'm sorry. First of all, I wanna offer to head up a citizens' action group here in Macon. I think that it's disgusting, some of the stuff that goes on in this town, and I'm gonna give you some examples. I had my wallet stolen back in September, almost $2,000. I recovered about 300 of it, which was on a gift card that I was able to recapture, and I've been stonewalled by the police ever since. I have had everything from an incompetent investigating officer come down and state that there was only $20 in it when it was almost $2,000. I've had a corporal who didn't show up. I've had a sergeant, most recently, who, after I complained here a couple of meetings back, got in touch with me and said he was gonna follow up. I had to call the county manager, because he never did, and the answer I got was, "Well, he's away on training this week, so he's trying to get permission from a judge to get the information from the phone number I gave him." I gave him the name of the perpetrator, I gave him the phone number, I gave him the email address. How much trouble is it for the police to call this person up and say, "Hey, we'd like to talk to you. Can you come to the station, or can we come and see you?" I mean, for crying out loud, they're making a federal case out of this when it should have been taken care of six months ago, eight months ago. I'm really sick and tired of the lack of action here and the lack of callbacks from people in this town, number one. Number two, I don't know why you people sit out there and put up with this baloney about this garbage assessment. Do you realize they went up 33% on your garbage bill? 33%! At a time when our contract with the land collection, landfill collection company has a contract to not go up one penny on our bill, but they went up 33%. Not only that, they want it all upfront. They want a full year upfront. Not only that, they did not supply people with vacant houses with trash barrels, but they're gonna charge them for trash pickup. My God, are we a nation of idiots here, or what? Let's get on these people and hold them accountable. I come here and I talk, and you know what? You get no answers from these people. All you do is you're talking, you feel good, 'cause you go sit down like you accomplished something. Well, you didn't when you come here. When you come here, they look at you with blank faces, and they wait for the meeting to be over, and they say, "Adios, see you next week," and that's it. It's baloney. Jeffersonville Road, I live off of Jeffersonville Road directly. I travel Jeffersonville Road three to five times a day. I see no reason why a few million dollars could not be used to just improve the road, to widen it, put some shoulders on it, make it a, a left turn lane at the traffic light at Miller Field. It's not gonna take a five-lane highway there. I have never sat at that light for more than two times to get through it, at the most. It's ridiculous, the, the amount of time, 24 years it's been going on here now? Oh, I'm, I'm sick with this. I had my house re-roofed recently. I have a two-story house, 18 squares of shingles, plus a square for, for cap on it. Now, for those of you that may not know the pricing, 18 square of architectural, architectural shingles alone sell for $45 a square. That's 100 square feet. I put on 18 square, installed materials and labor for $1,300. I'm gonna offer to become a purchasing agent for this damn town. If they can't do any better than the prices we're getting for the stuff that we're getting, I think these $250,000 studies are ridiculous. I saw pictures of a traffic circle, that looked like as much of a study as we need, and from that picture, I saw that 95% of that property is surrounded by Navisant. Give them the damn land, and let them provide the circle, and have us just have a right-of-way through it. I mean, I don't know who's doing the buying and the purchasing, but they aren't using a common lick of sense in their head when they're doing this, and I'm sick and tired of it. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but like I said, I'm all for starting a citizens' action group and putting some of these people and holding them accountable and getting some action going here, instead of just lip service that we get up here every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novak. Appreciate, appreciate you being here. Next, Mr. Donald Richardson. Mr. Richardson here is, wants to give us some grassroots reflections. Uh, next, Mr. Donald Richardson. Mr. Richardson here is, uh, wants to give us some grassroots reflections. Mr. Richardson, good to see you here tonight, sir, and you'll recognize for five minutes.
Okay, this is from, uh, Macbeth. So foul and fair a day I have not seen. How far is this call to forest? What are these so withered and so wild and they are tired? That look not like the inhabitants or the earth? And yet are on thee, live ye, or are you aught? The man may question, which seem to understand me. By each at once, her choppy fingers laying upon her skinny lips. You should be women, and yet your beards forbid me to interpret that you are so. Speak if you can. What are you? All hail, Macbeth, hail to thee, thine of clemish. All hail, Macbeth, hail to thee, thine of coward. All hail, Macbeth, thou shall be king thereafter. Good sir, why do you start and seem to fear things that sound so fair? I, the truth, are you fantastical or that indeed which outlet you show my noble partner? You greet represent grace and great prediction of noble having and of royal hope. That he seems rapt with all to me, you speak not. If you can look into the seeds of thine and say which grain we're growing, which will not? Speak then to me, neither beg nor fear, your favorites, not your hate. Hail, 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 lesser than Macbeth and greater, not so happy yet much happier. Thou shalt get kings, and though thou be none, so all hail, Macbeth and banquill. Banquill, Macbeth, all hail. Stay, you imperfect speakers, tell me more, vice and those deaf, I know I am thine of clemish. But how of coward, the thine of coward lives a prosperous gentleman and to be king stands not within the prospects of belief? No more than to be coward, save for whence you owe the strained intelligence of why? Upon this blasted heat you stoop our way? With such prophetic, prophetic greetings speak I charge you? The earth hath bubbles as the water has, and these are them whether are they vanished? Into the air and what seemed corporal melted and breathed into the wind? Where they had stayed? Were such things here as we do speak about, have we eaten on insane route? That takes the reason prisoner. Your children shall be kings, you shall be king, a thine of coward too, when it's not so, to the self same tune and words. I'm using this as a means of speaking in parables to those who knows what I'm talking about. And as I read my book of common prayer every day, um, and walking through this fourteen spheres and the starship, I'm giving a message in regard to this. So, uh, those are my grassroots comments for today.
Mr. Richardson, thank you very much. We, we appreciate, appreciate you being here and appreciate your comments, sir. Thank you. Uh, and next, we got Ms. Mary Wilder, um, and, uh, she's here to talk to us about a variety of things. Ms. Wilder, thank you very much for, for being here and for your patience, with your recognized for five minutes.
It's past my bedtime. Uh, first, I want to address something that I, I mentioned to you last time, uh, when I was here. The Forest Hill and Wesleyan Corner is clear enough for us to see cars coming down Wesleyan. Thank you. Secondly, Bowman Road has been partially paved and it has stripes, beautiful white stripes. I also noticed that money has been allocated for what people call the striping of the streets. It has been allocated. I don't know where that came from, but it was two hundred and something thousand dollars to, uh, do the lines on the, on the road. I hope that's being done, uh, rapidly so that those of us who can't see it in the dark can drive. Thank you for that money. Now, but this is why I'm here tonight. I'm a big recycler. And wow, when last Monday I went to recycle, wasn't there. And I went Tuesday and it wasn't there. That's the bin at the fire station. And I thought to myself when I came down here, when I said, it needs to be cleaned up. Maybe I mistakenly said it needs to be cleaned out. I don't mean for it to be cleaned out. We have hundreds and hundreds of people who use those bins at those, uh, that police, those, uh, those, um, fire stations. And Mr. Brat- Barclay did clean it up. It was beautifully cleaned up, all of them, from what I understand. But what in the world has happened to the, the elimination of recycling? That's just not going to do. So, let, let me talk a little bit about that. You convinced us that the landfill was on a death watch, right? That landfill is on death watch. Well, boy, it's going to be dead in a very, very quick way. You cannot put all those recycling, every time I go, it's either totally full or half-full. We have programs teaching our schoolchildren to recycle. Where are they going to recycle? Hundreds of us can't recycle anymore. And I'm in such a habit, I am still separating my, my garbage, but I don't know what I'm going to do with it, you know? Now, think about this. I called several places, got no return calls. I, I read a letter to the editor that said, it was Mr. Bedford, who said also he called and he got no return calls. I did neither. So, I don't know why you did this. And I can't find out why you did this. So, number one, we should have been notified this is going to be done. I don't like that kind of surprise. We should have been notified in the paper and on WMAC. Now, we need to know why it was done. What are the reasons? Is it because China doesn't take our recyclables anymore? That could be it, because they were our biggest people. Is it, okay, you're going to tell me money? Money's being spent everywhere. Nothing could be more important in this town than recycling. And we are all trying to do the best we can. Now, we have no place. So, what are the reasons, number one? And what are the solutions that the people like me and you can do to get this going again? How much is a new landfill going to be? What would a recycling plant here for us, if there's one in Milletville? But I, I really think that, that a lot of, lot of people are going to be upset about this. We don't know why it was done. And we want to know if there are solutions that we can work out, you and we. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Wilder. We appreciate you being here and, and, uh, the only thing I, uh, do you use curbside recycling? Do you have a cart for curbside recycling?
It's in an area like the apartments. I live in, uh, in apartment area.
Oh.
Excuse me, apartment area where it's not picked up. And apartments have this same kind of, uh, issue as well, see? And, and is this a foreboding about the entire recycling program for everybody? That would be a real disaster.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that clarification. Next, Mr. Willie Frazier, uh, talk, wants to talk to us about a variety of things. Mr. Frazier, thank you for your patience. You'll recognize for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that I'm last, but I hope that I'm not least. One thing that I do and that I say today, I've sat out there and I hear the hearts of the citizens and the people of Macon. I hear the hearts of those that's in leadership positions. I was going to say something else, but I changed one of the things that I want to say because I have to address something. We're hearing the hearts of these citizens because I'm one of them. One thing that I recognize, on Jeffersonville Road, my church is over there. And I watched on their agenda sheet, they talk about putting a pedestrian and all this money to build pedestrian things. Why is that needed when you can't even walk down Jeffersonville Road? I have, I, when I walk the church, I have to walk in the road, take chances of getting hit by cars. I have to stay off of the main because there might be snakes in the bushes because with all these tractors that you got, nobody can even go down Jefferson Road and cut the bushes low enough so we can stay on the curb. I have to watch those ditches down there that's nasty and full of trash. And I have to watch all of our community look like trash. And the reason why I say that is because I done been in each side of your towns. I done been in each place and I'm a historian over in Pleasant Hill. It's sad to see our city going to waste. It's sad to see our businesses leaving. It's sad to see all this death and destruction. Do you recognize that every day our children in this city is killing each other, gun control? Every time you come here, you're given alcohol license, all other kind of licenses to people for things that's carried that's not needed. You give so many guns that all our nation, all our neighborhoods are infested with guns. With young folk that don't even know the meaning of a gun to try to protect your property or anything else because they're killing themselves. You're not going to have anybody to turn around and try to look after, that's going to take care of your city because they're all going to be dead. Our city is dying. Our businesses are dying. And everything about what we're doing here is dying. And if we want to live, we're going to have to leave here or either we're going to have to come down here and make some changes. It's sad that we come down here from week to week and you all don't seem to be taking care. I wish I was your commissioner. I wish I was your leader. You would see me in your neighborhood because you know what? I'll never get to be that I can't be where you are. I'll never get to high and live in an area that's gated in that I can't, that you can't get into and watch you die out there. I'm going to come out there and fight with you. I'm going to come out there and die with you. I'm going to come and make changes. If somebody don't come pick your garbage up, I'm going to be your commissioner on the back of a garbage truck because I'm going to go down there and get one. And I'm going to come and make sure your garbage picked up if I get your money because you know what? If I do that, then guess what? I wouldn't mind giving you extra money. I wouldn't mind doing something else extra for you. I wouldn't mind making this city into something that's great. You know, I'm tired of looking at my city and recognizing that my city's coming down to nothing because I am somebody. And I am about something, even in this history thing. The same way I stand for people of color out there in Linwood Cemetery, I stand for that statue out there of the Confederacy on that porch out there. Because all history is good history. All remembrance is good. And the thing is, we got to find individuals that'll stand. If you won't stand for me, I'll stand for myself in this city. Because I ain't intent to fail. I ain't intent to keep on taking down. I ain't intent to keep on losing businesses. Why put parks out there and different stuff for these young folk with guns to go out there and rob you? And jack you? You see, you might be in a place that you don't have to worry about it, but I have to worry about it every day. I have to look over and watch my back every day. I have to get up and ride my bicycle to work because I don't own a car. Every morning at three and four o'clock in the morning, just waiting on somebody to jack me in my neighborhood. We need lights. That man need lights. I understand why he need lights. We're getting robbed out here. We're getting killed out here. You know, nobody cares enough anymore. And we wondering why everybody moving? We wondering why everybody leaving this city? We wondering why we losing? You see, just as well as we losing, y'all losing even though y'all got a little bit more. Either we going to be united or we going to be separated and we're all going to be to naught. Macon was always a great city. Everybody said we make it in Macon. We ain't making it in Macon anymore. Look around. Look around. Go out and travel around in your city. Go to some of these places where I live at. And I done lived on every side of Macon. It look like a war zone. You're biting everything over in Pleasant Hill that dropped down and kill the people of color history over there. But you ain't biting South Macon over there with all them torn down regular houses, rats everywhere and all other different kind of stuff that we have to live.
Mr. Frazier.
West Macon.
Mr. Frazier, y- your, your time is up, but we appreciate your passion and we appreciate you being here.
It's a sad thing, but guess what? If I got to leave this city to save myself, then I done said everything that I need to say because I want to see changes here like everybody else.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Frazier. We pre- appreciate you being here. Uh, la- la- last, Ms. Valerie Nguyen, uh, Ms. Nguyen, don't know what you want to talk, well, the budget. Yeah, it's down there. Ms. Nguyen, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Frazier, you were not the last person. I put on there, I put, yeah, Reverend Tillman, he, he, he thought he was the last one, but I'm going to have the last word and it's not going to be about what he was talking about. I put on there a budget because everything comes back to the budget, as you would well imagine. And the only thing I want to get up here and talk to you about really is the fact that, uh, we have one seat that's empty on the Board of Commissioners. And I've jumped in full force to try to fill that seat. And I'm asking because the budget is being discussed now for this city and county. And I want to be, I want us to have somebody from District One sitting at the commission seats when the budget votes start happening. I know that you're going to probably, probably present a budget, a first round of the budget before someone is seated. Our election is May the twenty-second, just started with early elections this week. I know that, I don't know the timeline. I, I wish I did. I'm sorry, there's not a dialogue between us about that for budgets. And I think that you start and then you review it and you go back and review it again until you finally come to a consensus and a conclusion. And I hope that we'll have somebody at the seat for District One. Now, I did say one time when I came here before that District One pays the most in property taxes. And I did also follow up and say that does, does not make us any better than anyone else. It just means that we warrant a seat on the Board of Commissioners to have a vote on the budget and on the monies that's being spent by the city. I'm a homegrown girl. I was born and raised in Macon, Georgia, educated in the public schools, which were good when I came through them. And then I went on to college, fortunate enough to do that. And I came back to Macon to make my life and my home and my profession. And I don't think that I recall a budget situation as bad as it is right now. I could be wrong because I haven't been coming to these meetings for a lot of years, but I could be wrong. But this is sad. Um, I'm concerned. That's why I jumped in full force to see if I could have any, any effect on that. And I want us to turn this city around. Our ship needs to be turned around, not, you heard the word correctly, S-H-I-P, needs to be turned around. And we need to go in the right direction, start keeping people here again, making people feel safe again, keeping our city clean again, keeping things that people want and need in this city. I, you know, I look at the things like, a couple of new, new agenda items were, um, postponed until later to discuss like this Women's Violent Act thing. I'm sorry, sorry, I don't know what that is. You know, we need to look at the low hanging fruit, the small items. I call me a low a hundred thousand dollars and see where do we start with stopping some of those things? And just look at the budget with a fine tooth comb really to see how we need to curtail our expenses. That's the biggest thing. Spending, I said this last time, we're not a tax and spend, we're a spend and then tax city. Uh, we're coming that, becoming that way for our community. I know that the millage rate is being considered to be raised again for another year in a row. Uh, the property taxpayers of this community shouldn't have to carry that burden on their backs all the time. We're, we're a community of about a hundred and fifty thousand people, about fifty, fifty percent of which, that's about seventy-five thousand, are property owners that pay the taxes on their properties. Yes, we do that because we don't want to get in trouble. We're, we're going to be good citizens here. But we shouldn't have another burden put on our back to help the finances of this city. The millage rate, another five mills to be increased is going to really upset the community. The word is out there. I'm, I'm walking the streets literally, talking to people, trying to get their vote. And that's the one thing that comes up usually. So, I want to have, you know, I know I can't tell you, wait on the budget till somebody gets there like me. But I want to be able to have someone in that seat. Hopefully, we won't have a runoff and we'll have somebody there that can be there when the vote occurs. I just want you to know that I care about this city. I'm vested in it. I'm probably going to die here. So, I want this city to turn around and be good. We don't want to see Houston County beating us and getting ahead of us. and people moving to Monroe County for various reasons. We want Macon. We've got, we're the heart of Georgia. We should be the city that's one of the best. And we've got to turn this thing around somehow. So I know half the commissioners are gone already. I guess someone said, "Sometimes you leave, you just stare at us like it doesn't matter when we get up here and talk." But sometimes it does. So I hope you do listen, and thank you for the people that are still here. I think that's all I want to say to you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. We appreciate you being here. That's all the people that have signed. I'm sorry, sir. Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Oh, on with Wade Horton. Ms. Glover? Okay, Ms. Glover, I'm sorry. I thought he was speaking for you. I shouldn't have made that assumption.
Good evening. As I heard, that half of the county commissioners have left. But what I want to say is this. I feel I need to introduce myself, because with what's happening with transportation, in particular paratransit, it disturbs me badly. I am legally blind. I've been blind legally ever since nineteen ninety-two. When I went blind, I was working in banking. And then I started riding paratransit. At one time, I stopped riding public transportation, because I couldn't get to any appointments on time. So I would depend on other people to take me where I needed to go. Then I decided, no, that shouldn't be going on, because they've got a life, and they should not put their life on hold to do what I need done. So I decided that I was gonna go back and fight for what I was paying taxes for. I was gonna fight to use the public transportation system so that I could do it. And I started riding it. And this is one thing that a lot of people do not know. When I started riding it, we were being charged three dollars, this is paratransit, each way to ride, okay? When I went and I discovered that that was against the law, because the public system here, they were only charging, at that time, I believe, one dollar. So they could lawfully only charge me twice what they would charge in the public fixed route system. So I went and I talked to everyone about it. I went up the chain of command. I understand chain of command. I got to the top people in Macon, and they told me they could charge me what they wanted to charge me. And I said, "Okay." I asked them about the regional people in Atlanta. They told me they couldn't put their hand on it right then and there. So I said, "Okay, okay." So you know, you don't stop me by telling me what you can't do for me, because I'm gonna go all the way. So the next thing they knew, the Office of Civil Rights in DC were calling them and explaining to them that they could not do that. Now, they don't know that, I know, but before the people from the Office of Civil Rights called them, they called me, and they asked me what had I done. I told them I went up the chain of command. They asked me who all I talked to. I gave them a list of who all I talked to. So when I start talking to you and putting stuff out there, don't get it wrong, I beat on did the research. I worked on doing the research. And I sit and I listen to you, and I let you go for a while. Now, what I'm watching and what's happening with our transportation system here is just great. Because if you're gonna grow, as the lady was saying, "We want a bill making up," you not gonna bill making up if you destroying your public transportation system. Because most people, a lot of people now, a lot of the people, they want that public access. They don't want to have to get in a car. And I know people who have come to Macon said they weren't gonna buy a car. They were gonna use public transportation. I also had some friends that tell me they want to move to Macon. And I told them, "Are you bringing your transportation? Are you bringing your job?" And if you're not doing that, you don't need to come here. Because we, it's not, you're not looking at people as people. There's a great divide in this city, and it's a sad divide. You know, I sit and I look. And I tell you this, you know, we look at the people that ride public transportation in this town a lot as poor people, uneducated people. Well, let me tell you, I am educated. I have a master's degree, okay? And I use public transportation, because I can't drive a car, okay? And what we, what's happening with paratransit, with the toll transportation system, the person that's in control, I probably could do about as good a job as he can. He has no training in that field, okay? He was in banking. And the next thing we know, we look up and he's over all the transportation in Macon. It makes no sense at all. Okay, he's over transportation. This man has worked all his life in banking. But you understand, you gonna make him CEO? And the question is, how did he do that? Because they did not vote on it in the board meeting. They didn't vote on it, 'cause I was there. Next thing I know, he came in, they saying he's the CEO, okay? All right, so he is the CEO. Okay, so who voted him in? We here, they got an executive board. Who is on the executive board? Nobody can answer that question. And Mr. Horton asked that question several times up here. We trying to find out who's the executive board. Nobody is, you're not really concerned about it, okay? Believe me, I'm for doing everything you can for Mercer. But y'all need to do something for the rest of the citizens in this town, because Mercer got one of your buses. But the rest of us, we ain't got, we don't have, we don't have anybody speaking for us. Nobody's speaking for us. We are just here.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired, but we appreciate your passion and we appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Nobody else has signed up, and no points of personal privilege. Well, sir, what we typically do is ask people to sign in five minutes before we begin. Yes, sir. Got a motion to allow, second, come ahead, sir. You'll have to give us your name and address when you get us there. We'll have it for the minutes.
My name is Ken Reddick, four six nine eight Sprucewood Drive. All right, Macon, Georgia. Thank you for giving me this time. Thanks for the other council members that have stuck around. But I'd like to know, well, the District One is empty, the seat is empty. And I'd like to know when we get to see the meet or see the, talk to the representatives that will be running. Also, there's a house on forty-six thirty-four South Beechwood Drive that has been burnt, burned down. It's sitting there with a shell. I understand there's no taxes been paid on the property. That's what I understand anyway, and what can be done about it? Thank you, sir. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your patience. Appreciate you being here with us. You may want to give the address again of the house that was burned down?
No problem, like I said, you know?
Yeah, we'll get that and try to check on it for you.
That's all I've got is time, so.
Very good, sir. There being no further discussion, no points of personal privilege, we've reached the end of our agenda, therefore we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate you being here.